So I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And then a roll call.
Jim Bowser?
Here.
Mike Boldig?
Here.
Noel Deeb?
Here.
Jeanne Long?
Here.
Jessica Mead?
Here.
Mary Newfeld?
Here.
Danny Pyatt?
Here.
J.D. Schrader?
And Andy Marys?
Yes.
motion to approve the agenda and the minutes and the financial report.
I move the board approve the minutes of the January 30th, 2019 special board meeting, financial report for July 2019, consideration of the bill, checks number 30553130, the amounts of $174,130.38, ACH numbers 1920000006, 1 through 192000156, in the amount of $595,277.76, and one wire transfer in the amount of $32,572.42, for a total of $893,128.80.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments on that? And we do a roll call.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
And Andy Marys?
Yes.
I don't think there's any public comment there, is there?
No.
So we'll be looking for a motion to approve the minutes from the committee of the whole meeting.
I move the board approve the committee of the whole minutes from August 13th, 2019.
Second. Any questions or comments on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Those? Okay, yes. And we'll go on to seclusion and restraint report.
We were going to table that.
Yeah, we could not collect the data in time, so we will report next month.
Okay. And then we'll go on to plans for the rural school buildings.
So we met today again at Colt and this was on the agenda, so Jake can talk a little bit about the status of all three, and then we'll talk about the minutia with what's in the buildings and the plan to work with that.
So Spring Valley has been presented, all three town boards, which again is Anigo, Town Geneva, and Town Pollard, and all three have formally made motion to decline interest in that building. So that one is up for discussion on how you want us to move forward with advertising and/or preparing for sales, things like that. Crestwood has been presented to all three, originally on the deed, which is Anigo, Pollard, and Norwood. Anigo and Pollard have formally made motion to decline. Norwood, I believe, was going to, and then they had a couple citizens question and make the board hesitate last month's meeting, so they would like to take this next month until September 10th, I believe, to make a decision on whether they're interested or not. The Pleasant View, the three that were notified and discussed with were Ackley, Rowling, no, sorry, that was just two on that one, was Ackley and Rowling. Ackley declined formally to have any interest in it, and Rowling made motion that they did want to purchase it. We met with Dave Kowza, which is the town chairman, and talked about the deed and if there was clear title, if there was any, sorry, the deed restriction that would go with it, if there was any problems with the title. We had annual extract and Mike Winter look into it. It looks like that is all clear. We don't have an amount of what the sale price was for that property, but back in that time they used a stamp process on the paperwork that each stamp signified X dollars. So there's, I believe, five, from what we can tell, it's pretty shaded copy, but Mike Winter felt that that was substantially good enough to declare that there was fair market value paid for it, it wasn't given for a dollar or anything like that, which from the town of Rowling they were questioning to make sure that there was no reverberating clause to that sale. And everything from the extract company and Mike Winter says that there's no reverberating clause and that that was a full price sale, so we should not have any issue with that. So what the town of Rowling did is they held public meetings, they got input from the people who attended the meeting, and did kind of a paperback just to get an advisory vote on what to do with it and that passed, so the board has the approval from the citizens to pursue the purchase of it. I feel like the next step should be that we draw papers for an offer to purchase with them, and then they will formally act on that at their next meeting, which would be the 10th, if you so choose. So I guess in that case, I would be suggesting that you give us approval to go ahead and draw up those papers with Mike Winter for purchase, so they can approve that purchase formally at their board meeting next month, September 10th.
Clarification, is this for only the school building or the land that goes with it?
The entire property, so it's roughly 40 acres and the building.
There was some discussion in previous months about maybe spreading that up. Somebody raised the question about are we selling the entire building or?
I think the question has been raised.
Okay.
But I don't think we ever decided anything about it.
No, I don't think so. There was some discussion about dividing up the parcels, but if you want to sell it as one piece, that's how it has.
My opinion is that the land has value, but the building has a negative value. Okay.
Andy, if I can state that, I guess we were under the impression when we talked to Chairman Kowza, that it was one parcel, and it was a dollar in kind, was kind of our discussions with Jake. And so I hope we didn't lead them down a road that the board didn't choose to go down. That was the discussions we've had.
I thought it was my understanding that they would maybe just be interested in, because they were talking about the ballpark and different stuff, but I'm with Andy, we're going to get rid of it, we'll get rid of it. I'm interested in trying to part it up, and then they might lose interest in that.
And we've had the discussion in the past of offering the buildings to the townships for that dollar.
Right.
And if they were not interested, then we would go the different route with real estate and sell them. So you're right, in my opinion, of what you did. That was the discussion that you had. Yeah, right. Sorry, Mike. No, 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 but so that township is looking at not only the school building, but the additional 40 acres to go with. And you said it's sure.
Yeah, and they're serious to the point where they've surveyed it to ensure they know what they are looking at, so that there's no conflict of property lines or things like that.
So their presumption is not that they would get the building plus 40 acres for a dollar, is it?
Yes.
Yes.
So do you have a problem with that, Mike?
No, 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 I'm just, I just wanted to make sure that in my mind I was clear on it, because other buildings, Crestwood, for example, how much, what's the acreage out there?
Forty.
That's forty, Spring Valley?
No.
That's on the 10th. Is that a happy deal for the township?
Well, it's a happy deal. If they do anything with it that's good for their community, it's a good thing.
Well, I, I'll give you that.
Are they still putting any restrictions on there about it?
Yes.
Same restrictions, and that has been clarified.
Yes.
In our meeting.
Okay. So I'd like to mention what conversations we've had today. So we, you know, I've seen on the Wisconsin Public Surplus Auction, so it's an online auction service, and the county has been using that to sell delinquent property. And so Jake and I spoke with Robin Stowe with the county today, and Robin suggested we talk to Judy Nagel, and Judy is handling those sales. And they have been using that for, they've switched now, so they are on Wisconsin Public Surplus, and she highly recommends it. And they recently had a sale from, they typically will go something like a 30-day auction, all the activity happens on the last day, and she has said they've turned properties in 30 days that used to take them years to turn. And their last one was up in Deerbrook, and they sold nine acres for $43,000. And she said it's just been very clean. I don't know how deeds work, but they do a quick claim deed, because it's really, because of delinquent taxes, it's not necessarily in their name, and they do a quick claim deed to the buyer. And she said they've done a number of parcels. And if you go on the Wisconsin Public Surplus site and you type in real estate in the search bar, many, many counties are using that service. And I see properties in Townsend, lots of recreational properties that have gone delinquent, small parcels. She just said they've been very, very pleased with the service.
So what we discussed is doing that with the two?
With the two properties.
Well, certainly Spring Valley, because that one is not cleared, but as I said, Crestwood is still Norwood is sent away.
We have to wait till next month for Crestwood?
Yeah, they would know on the 10th, and I guess, I guess from the way I'm looking at it is if the board is comfortable proceeding with writing out paperwork on Pleasant View, you know, that's the option that we would follow if Norwood had interest. Or if Norwood declines, then we would follow the path that you set forth on Spring Valley, so that we could proceed to move prior to coming back at the end of next month, was the thought. And then if whichever path is chosen based on Norwood's interest, then we could just do two at once, and then we'll be together.
Have we had, Jake, have we had local interest of, for?
We have had local interest for Spring Valley, and there has been interest in Crestwood as well. There has been some interest in Pleasant View as well, local private people.
You know, if we decide to go the auction route, I think we should notify those folks that that's the vehicle we want to use to go with. Yeah. Good courtesy to them. Yeah.
I just have one problem here, Jake, is that on the agenda, this isn't listed as an action item.
Correct.
And we did talk about that, it was more of an update with our intentions to let you know next steps. So Mike Winter will be here this evening, certainly in, for closed sessions, so, but I know we can't really take action on it then either, but.
Right. No, and I think what, I guess how I envisioned it would go is that if this, the way I'd describe this as the way that you'd like to proceed, then we would draft up the paperwork for them to formally make an offer to purchase for you to consider. This doesn't necessarily prove that you're selling it, but it allows us to draft paperwork for you then to approve it if they, if they make the offer to purchase. You know, because as the buyer, I think that we need an offer to purchase to accept versus approving acceptance of offer to purchase that hasn't officially been made by them yet. So they're really looking, you know, maybe offer to purchase is the wrong word, Mike can clarify that, but the town board of Rowling is looking for some sort of documentation that they can formally approve and sign and issue an offer to us to purchase that property. Then that would be brought here for your approval to accept that offer to purchase was how I envisioned it going, but I may be incorrect.
Okay.
That makes sense to me, because then you would take action when it's on the agenda.
Been talking with the county, I think, even if we approve it in September, you know, they talked about, you know, you could have the building sold in 30 days, whether that's the board's intention, we could have it sold before we get to the heat.
Winter?
Yeah.
Okay, I've got, I was just wondering, listening to all of this and the paperwork, are we also including something in this, in these contracts, in the campus schools?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yeah.
And when we met?
I've been very, very clear every meeting with every town board that, that non, or a?
Can't be used for educational?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Essentially, the non-reverberating clause is in there in that it pertains to compulsory education that's recognized by PPI. And I've been very, very clear and redundant on that.
So as I understand it, now the board is directing Jake and proceed with exploring and coming back with actionable item at the next board meeting, or at the committee of the whole with the offer from Town of Rowland?
For that one school, yeah.
For Pleasant View?
Yeah. Does anybody have any objection to directing it to go up that one school?
But could, could you go ahead and do, because they're going to have a meeting on the 10th, which is the same night as our committee of the whole, for Crestwood, if they decide, the town of Norwood decides, can we direct them as well and have both schools potentially ready to go for that board meeting?
Of the September 24th meeting.
I would, I would think so, and I would prefer that if that's possible from Mike Winter's side, yes.
And then at that same board meeting, we would give direction what to do with Spring Valley.
Well, I think that, you know, we would take that direction now and get the details worked out with that website and make a presentation to you that this will be how it's listed. This is?
Which makes sense.
They don't get to finalize everything on all three schools for the September 24th meeting?
Yeah. You know, we would include some dates that we would probably hold for those that are being auctioned off, some public dates that they could come in and examine the buildings, and then a beginning date of the auction and a close date of the auction for your approval before we would open it, but we would want to make sure details like, that you're aware of details of, you know, what the auctioneer fees are, and if that's a buyer's responsibility or seller's responsibility, what those percentages are, things like that, but just kind of want to know that we're going down that right road before we get, you know, many hours into trying to organize everything and schedule everything. But then before we move on any of it or open anything, it would be back here for the September board meeting for approval.
Okay.
One final comment, I also talked with Economic Development Corporation with the county, and Angie Close said she's been thinking about the schools for months. And in terms of, you know, the typical use of an educational building would be for apartments typically, and they're typically used for maybe an older population. And she says because of their location, they don't lend themselves readily to that development. And she was saying that, you know, I was thinking maybe she could help us market them and maybe find an economic driver for them. And she said that she could do that, but that would take, it could take considerable time for that to happen.
So to follow that, I did confirm with Mary K. Wolf from the Historical Society that the only pieces they are interested from all three are the signs with the shield, I think that's the word.
A shield with the logo of the mascot that are hanging, they're approximately this wide and this tall that are hanging on the wall of the gymnasium at Pleasant View, and they have the three schools with their mascot logos on there. And they, that was the only thing that they, they came and walked the building and said, you know, we have a bunch of bells, we have a bunch of pictures, we have a bunch of others. So she goes, really, just something signifying the name of the school and its existence would be, you know, the only thing they'd really be interested in, so that was what they had come up with, so.
So what we would like to do, and wanted your feedback, was in September, starting the 23rd, have three separate evenings, one at each rural school, open at 6 o'clock, advertise, of course, so that anyone interested in coming through and making a free will donation for whatever they might take. If we really think there's something of value that would be, you know, perhaps people would, multiple people would be interested in the same item, we might have a silent auction, but we have to get in there and see first. So it would be the 23rd, we would have a board meeting, and then the 25th and 6th, one each night. So, and we would welcome you to come, because there's been discussion like, what do we do if it's first come, first served? But, you know, we will trust our public, and if two people really want the same picture, we'll, no, then we're not having an argument.
Norwood let them come in?
So, and we don't, we can't predict how much interest that will generate. I expect some, but I still believe we'll be left with a lot of memorabilia.
Is there some stuff there that you think you ought to start right out with, a sheet for a silent auction?
Yes, we'll go out ahead of time and, yes, do that.
Because I've had calls from people who want those pictures.
Class pictures, yeah.
Class pictures, Maxwell Awards, the big bell that's in Spring Valley, those are probably the top three here, so that's good.
So those are the things, we can say auction starts at 6:00 and closes at 7:30 or something?
Right.
Okay.
Well, then why don't we have to split Pleasant View's going out to the Vulcan? Select items will be included.
Mike Weryo has been working, is that on what's, whatnot, there's been a couple items that have, science teachers that feature sometimes in their classroom or things of that nature, but Mike Weryo's been involved in that.
Are there going to be items that are going to go in the giveaway night?
My, oh, not on the tax.
Not on the taxidermy stuff? So it's off going someplace?
Yeah.
Andy, I would think that we try to reach out to the original donors to see if they want it returned, and then we could, if they don't want it returned, if we can get that done before the open calls, then I think we, you know, do what we can. I mean, there's exotic birds in there, there's.
I thought we were getting anything else in shape yet.
Yeah, just select items, just need of, need of items, we don't need six chipmunks.
You don't.
I'll get you.
Sure you don't need one on your desk?
Okay, well, that all sounds like a good plan to me. Yep. Anybody else had any further comment on it, or?
No.
I mean, are we, are we going down the right road with townships? I mean, if they, if they make offer to purchase for a dollar, is that, is that desirable by the board, or is that, I mean, I guess I'd just rather be upfront on that if there's different wishes at this point with township versus?
I, to me, I think it's reasonable, because you're giving it, you're giving the property back to the townships literally for that nominal fee, so townships can benefit from it. Who knows, they may want to sell some of the property, some of the old houses, we'll get that student enrollment, that upgrade that Tim was looking for. It's a positive, so.
Did Norwood, what was the holdup? Is it that they don't know if they want to purchase it, or they're waiting to see how?
They had a couple citizens question what it would cost to demolish it, and then there was a couple citizens from a little further south that questioned the title.
Okay.
I don't know beyond that, that was all I heard at the meeting, and I haven't had any discussion with them from them.
Okay. All right. Anything else from anybody? So why don't you just go ahead with that point as you presented it?
Okay.
Thank you. As Julie presented. Okay, we'll go on to the next item. So for board action, item A is approval of the FYI 2019-20 budget.
I move the board approve the budget as presented at tonight's budget hearing with total expenditures at all funds of $31,551,549.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Okay, and then we'll do a roll call.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Bowser?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Andy Marys?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll move on to the approval of the medical advisor agreement for 1920.
I move the board approve the 2019-2020 medical advisor agreement as presented.
Second. Any discussion or questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Passed? We'll go on to snowplow bids.
I move the board accept the bid for the snowplow services from Corvair to Signfest Incorporated as presented.
Second.
Okay, any questions, comments?
We only received one bid?
So we did only receive one. Mark Stibbe was the other contractor that had normally bid. Tom Heinzman did contact us, had short interest, but for whatever reason didn't submit a bid. And there was, I believe, Bowling Green acquired, but for whatever reason didn't feel comfortable bidding it as well. I am trying to put it out there to get competitive bids, it's always nice to have more than one, especially, we just don't know what's going to happen around the corner, so. One thing that is a little bit unique with this bid versus the other is the salt price is market price. Last year, they really got slammed on the salt price, and we had discussion that, you know, they can provide us some sort of proof of market price would be fine. I thought that was completely fair versus trying to, you know, moving target, especially with the, with the way that commodity jumped by a share, so they just bid at market price versus a straight price that they typically have on the market.
And this is all on hourly rate, correct?
Yes.
And over the last three years, have we been, budget-wise, have we been in a range here that's?
Last year?
I mean, how much?
Last year made the anomaly.
Last year, take that one out of the equation, years prior, we've been very, very consistent. Hourly rate that is here typically, it's increased like a dollar or two a year. Hourly rate that is here, typically it's increased like a dollar or two a year. I know that Mark had it the three years prior, the last three years, and then you've had it three years before that, and if you look at it, they've basically been all bidding each other by a dollar a year as it went up, and this year it has $2 an hour on there, and that's, that's typical. But as far as overall costs for storing, it has been fairly flat with the exception of.
Okay, we budget about $60,000. And we, we aren't going to save appreciably by the rural schools by not having them. The county comes in on their route and just really swings in and swings out, and that's very, very inexpensive plowing. There's no curb and gutter to go around or anything like that, and there's no snow removal ever. So it's, it's very inexpensive on our rural sites.
It's for all three rural sites, it was about $10,000 total combined cost for all three. Very, very inexpensive.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And we can do a roll call.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balzer?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
Okay, we'll go on to resignations.
I move the board accept the following resignations. Kelly Carlson, special education effective June 30th, 2019. Ashley Hetke, grade five teacher at North effective July 25th, 2019. Laura Spink, instructional assistant at Antigo High School effective August 19th, 2019. And Paula Sharon, library clerk at Antigo High School effective August 12th, 2019.
Second. Any questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And that passes, and we'll go on to new hires.
I move the board approve the following. New hire Samantha Carrero, limited term contract. Mary Truman, limited term contract. Ronald Schmedick, limited term contract. Mary Hayes. Marissa Kohler. Cassandra Peterka. Heidi Rohat. Heather Bessert. Jessica Flunkey. And Linda Turner.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments? And we'll do a roll call for that.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balzer?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
And we'll go on to donations.
I move the board accept the following donations. City gas, $4,000 for the diving board at the pool. Antigo Lions Club, $750 for the fill-in backpack. Kayla Saberlick, $230 for Nabokan Project. Von Bag, $100 for K3 orientation. Mark and Vicky Jurson, $50 for the backpack. Co-Vantage Credit Union, $500 for K3 orientation. Christ Central Church, $200 for the backpack. Timothy and Rose Frunti, $150 for fill-in backpack, for a total of $5,980.
Second. Okay, any questions or comments other than thank you to all those donated?
Thank you.
The one for Nabokan was in memory of, I'm forgetting his person, I apologize. Spiegel.
Tim?
Tim Seaton?
Tim Spiegel.
Spiegel, okay.
Very nice.
Okay, I guess we do a roll call on those.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balzer?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
And then we'll confirm that the next meeting is September 24th, six o'clock here. We're ready to, to consideration of the motion to adjourn in closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin statute 19.851G, conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is or is likely to be involved.
Second. Danny Pyatt?
Yes.
Jim Balzer?
Yes.
Mike Boldig?
Yes.
Noel Deeb?
Yes.
Jeanne Long?
Yes.
Mary Newfeld?
Yes.
Jessica Mead?
Yes.
And Andy Mary?
Yes.
Okay, I think we'll take just a short break before we move into the next.